Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 16th. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Laramie D. Long, pastor of 22nd Avenue Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Clinton Woods. If you're willing and able, please stand.
I would like to say good morning to everyone. Let us pray. Lord God, we just come now to say, um, thank you. I'm thanking you for being God and being God all by yourself. Lord God, we thank you for allowing us to see another day, a day we've never seen and a day we'll never see again. Now, Lord, we just come now just asking you to be with us as we come together. Lord God, let us be, um, in the spirit of oneness, Lord God, that we will come seeking you, Lord God, for we know that you are able to do all things but fail. Lord God, we come now praying for, um, this nation, we're praying for this city, Lord God. We, um, read in your word where you said that you sought a man that would, um, repair the wall before you, that you would not destroy the land, but you found none. But we pray for men today to stand up and help restore our communities, Lord God. Be men of accountability, Lord God. We pray for our elected officials that, um, they may lean not to their own understanding, but acknowledge you in all of their ways, that you may direct their path. Lord God, we pray that you will remind us of our obligation to have a sense of social responsibility, to care and love for one another. Lord, we realize that the council comes to handle business, but we know that you have already given us the remedy for everything that we are facing today. For your words say, if your people who are called by your name will humble themselves, pray, seek your face, and turn from their wicked ways, then you will hear from heaven, forgive sin, and heal the land. So, Lord God, we just thank you now. And we just pray now that all that is said and is done, that it may be pleasing in your sight, that you will get to do glory for it is all about you and not about us. In your son, Jesus' name, we thank you. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Morning. Councilmember Smithman.
Morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Pro Tim Alexander. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Council, before us, we have the April 15th, 22nd, and 29th of 2025 meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll consider a motion to approve.
I'll be a favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no.
All right, um, the minutes are not ready for the May 6th, 2025 through September 9th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning to you.
Morning.
Good morning to the entire council. Good to see you all this morning. And good morning to the general public, those in the audience here in the chamber, as well as those online. I want to start with, uh, an update related to food trucks. The city of Birmingham would like to invite all food truck operators, food and tank vendors as well, um, to an event for an important informational session, Tuesday, September 30th at 4:00 p.m. This event will take place at the Ballwell Auditorium, and that address is 1930 Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. The time of the event will be again from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This three-hour informational session is designed to help vendors and planners understand what is required to legally operate a mobile food business within the Birmingham city limits. Um, this session will also provide critical information for those planning to sell food or organize events during the Magic City Classic. We want to encourage those who would like to attend in advance to register and also send an email to register@birminghamal.gov. Again, that's register@birminghamal.gov. At this time, I would like to ask Sandy Green and any of her guests to join me here at the podium. Sandy Green is here to bring awareness for, um, alopecia, alopecia awareness. As the founder and president of Don't Stare, Just Ask, Sandy has spent the last several years helping individuals affected by alopecia feel seen, supported, and celebrated. And so, we would like to highlight awareness about alopecia and celebrate the work of Ms. Sandy Green with the proclamation that I will read in part. In states where since 2022, Sandy has organized annual alopecia awareness walks across Alabama, with the fourth annual walk taking place in September in Birmingham, to offer a place of unity, education, and encouragement for those navigating life with alopecia. And whereas through her work as a former employee with Birmingham City Schools and founder of Alpha Zeta Capital Sorority Incorporated, Sandy has uplifted children and women experiencing hair loss, advocated for those facing bullying, and created safe spaces where self-worth is affirmed and beauty is redefined. And whereas Sandy's advocacy does not stop with alopecia, she is a humanitarian who feeds and clothes those in need, a model who walks boldly, bald, and beautiful to show what confidence looks like and a voice for the voiceless in our community. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, lead the city of Birmingham along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby recognize and commend Sandy Green for her unwavering commitment to advocacy, representation, and public education surrounding alopecia. And her efforts are changing lives and shifting the narrative, one story, one walk, and one conversation at a time. And I present to you Birmingham Council, Ms. Green.
Good morning again. My name is Sandy Green, and I am the founder of Don't Stare, Just Ask. Um, what is alopecia? Alopecia is autoimmune disorder that causes hair loss. Not everyone that have alopecia is bald, but I am one of those that is bald. I wanted to present the mayor with my second book that's called All That Pizza, Alopecia. And I named it All That Pizza because my granddaughter cannot say alopecia. She says All That Pizza. And Councilwoman Smithman read my book, um, all across America earlier this year to the students. And I just want to say thank you guys for always being here for me when I'm asking questions, when I need things, and I'm so grateful. Um, last night, I got back in town around 12:00 because I was in Virginia speaking about alopecia. And the first thing that I did before I even got home was come to City Hall to see the blue lights because I'm grateful for the mayor and the councilman for allowing the lights to be blue to represent alopecia. And again, I want to say thank you. I'm grateful. Alopecia does not define who I am. Alopecia is something that I have to do to help others. So if you see someone that look different than you are, don't stare, just ask. Thank you.
This, this is what you read, Ms. Smithman, Councilwoman Smith? This is nice. Yeah. All That Pizza. So at this time, I would like to ask, um, your colleague, Councilor Hunter Williams, to join me at the podium along with Ms. Emily Northrup and Cindy Lowery and any guests they may have. So, it is, good morning, everyone. As they come along with Council Williams, and I know that council, um, shares our sentiment as well. Emily and Cindy, along with their guests, along with Councilor Williams, represent the commitment to our community, um, to clean air, clean water, and healthier communities. And with this proclamation that we will share today, we want to, and Councilor Williams, your colleague, would like to call attention to a national commitment on September 21st, for S-U-N Day, Sunday. And so, now I'll read the proclamation in part and let these amazing people along with Council Williams share more detail. States whereas Birmingham has always been a city that knows how to lead with heart, courage, and vision. And that includes how we power our future. And whereas the city of Birmingham's Office of Resilience and Sustainability continues to drive progress on this front, working to improve air quality, expand access to green spaces, and invest in forward-thinking neighborhood-based clean energy solutions. And whereas on Sunday, September 21st, 2025, thousands of people across the country will gather to take part in SUNDAY, a coordinated movement of climate action aimed at building momentum and shining a light on the future we can shape together. And now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with Councilor Hunter Williams, City Council Representative of District 2, and along with the entire Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2025, as SUNDAY. And the city of Birmingham encourage all residents, business owners, educators, and community leaders to learn more about solar and wind energy, to advocate for clean energy, and to help shape a city where environmental justice is not just a vision or a buzzword, but a reality. At this time, I would like Council Williams to share, um, more, and then he'll introduce our two guests, Ms. Emily Northrup and Cindy Lowery, to share some words as well.
You know, I really, I'm gonna let Emily and Cindy take this away, but, you know, we, I think that we as a city use solar a lot more than we think we do. Um, on our massive camera project that we just approved as a council, many of those actually will be solar-powered. We've looked at, I know, uh, JT Moore, I think that you mentioned that we've been looking at some lighting solutions that because of accessibility of getting actually the wires in the ground and potential theft, we've actually looked at utilizing solar for that. And the city obviously is moving towards a hybrid or electric vehicle fleet, um, in, in, in some of its departments. And so, I think that we need to realize that, that we as a city actually are doing more than most municipalities in the state of Alabama when it comes to solar and clean energy. But I really wanted these people that are very passionate about it and resident to districts to take it away.
I'm gonna be your only speaker. Um, so, good morning. I'm Emily Northrup, and I am a proud resident of the Eastwood neighborhood and just a house away from Shades Creek and the Flor Johnston Nation, uh, Nature Park. Thanks to Councilor Williams for being our champion with this resolution. Um, I brought it to him under the auspices of the Citizens Climate Lobby. We are a nonpartisan grassroots advocacy group. And if we're going to avert the worst-case climate scenarios, we have to move aggressively on clean energy, and that's why the CCL is here. We were joined in seeking this declaration by 19 local nonprofits and, um, uh, including environmental, church, and refugee organizations, and six local coffee shops because they are on the front line of climate change. Uh, with me today is Cindy Lowery of the Alabama Rivers Alliance. Um, I'd like for you to know that 80% of the withdrawals from Alabama rivers are for cooling coal, gas, and nuclear power plants. And, uh, solar power doesn't need, uh, those withdrawals. Stephen Caprio is here with the Kahaba Alliance for Conservation and Sustainability, who's, uh, passionate about clean energy, uh, clean and inexpensive solar power as a way to transform our lives and our economy. And a wonderful, uh, story is from Mary Ann Plant of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Birmingham, who, um, they're getting an entire new solar system, uh, that's gonna reduce their power bills by one-third and pay for itself, um, in 10 years. So, I want to share briefly about the, uh, SUNDAY event that we're gonna have here in Birmingham, and you have some materials on that at your desk. So, as the mayor said, SUNDAY is a new national celebration of wind and solar, and there are gonna be 400 local events around, uh, the country, including SUNDAY Beham. We're having a pop-up market with 26 vendors and 16 nonprofits, and a very friendly competition for two $200 prizes. Uh, winners are gonna be determined through very brief celebrations of solar energy. We're gonna have a table there where everyone will be invited to write Alabama's Public Service Commission to encourage the, um, to urge the PSC to encourage rather than deter, uh, solar power in Alabama. And you can see the back of our door hanger for what our messaging is on that. Who among us has ever contacted our elected officials at the PSC? Um, a very quick ask, we would love to bring this PSC Action Table to other events. So please be in touch with me, Emily, my, uh, the email address on there if there, if you can recommend, uh, us to a, uh, tabling event in your district. Our event is this Sunday, 1 to 4, at the Avondale United Methodist Church. We would be thrilled, should any of you be able to come by, to the Avondale United Methodist Church, Sunday, 1 to 4. So, thank you very much for the declaration, uh, and for your time.
Mr. President, I have one last note, and it's honestly, it's somber. It's one I wish I didn't have to come up here and share. But I want to take the time to remember three, three important people dear to our staff, combined with here at City Hall, but also throughout our community. One is Larry Johnson Jr. You know Larry, if you walk in this building on the second and first floor. Served at City Hall as, on our security team. He often had a kind word for folks arriving and departing here and had a presence. And I don't think he wanted to try him. But unfortunately, he passed away over the weekend at a young age of 53. We want to offer our condolences to his wife Carmen, as well as their three children, and extend our condolences to, um, his entire family, as well as his colleagues who served on the security team here. We're thinking about them, and we're thinking about his colleagues. All of us, um, many of us know Chef Michael Glenn. Chef Michael Glenn has been a longtime restauranteer and caterer in our city. If you've ever been to any private events in the city, you've probably seen Chef Glenn in somebody's kitchen or living room, um, doing what he does best. Uh, we knew his talent, and we knew his food from corporate dining rooms to community events to family gatherings. He was also the founder of Creative Caterings by Ambrosia and Gabriella's Bistro and Art Gallery, which is, uh, one of Kinder's favorite places on the Sunday afternoon. Unfortunately, he died after an extended illness over the weekend at 66. And last but not least, retired Jefferson County Judge, um, Teresa Pulliam. She passed away Friday at the age of 67. Many of us know her from serving on the bench 18 years, on the bench, as well as respected member of the legal community. After her time on the bench, she served as Executive Director of Redemption Earned, which is a nonprofit dedicated to parole reforms and better conditions for sick and elderly inmates. That piece, right? You spend all those years on the bench, and you're given this task of sentencing people. And of all people, judges know the impact of that outside of the actual defendant or victim or, and/or their respective families. But to take time after retirement to focus on parole reform, which is in the state of Alabama, we all know is overly needed. I just want to commend her. Uh, we want to recognize her life and the work of each of these three people I've named. Related to the judge, I do want to acknowledge her husband, Max, who I've known from the legal community when I was a lawyer practicing law myself. Um, and acknowledge his dau, acknowledge their daughter as well. Uh, but these three people were loved. These three people had families, and they all served and made impact in our community. And so, I just want to acknowledge them and let us all, um, think about them and continue to pray for their families. Mr. President and Council, with that, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Pro Tim Alexander has a question for you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, council, for being late, but Mayor Woodfin, I wanted to ask if, um, I could get some help from BDOT. I was in a conversation this morning. We have residents that live within the area, Oxmoor Valley, for the roadway, the path that goes from Wilson Road to Venice.
We talked to Madam President about Venice.
Yes, yes. And so, there's deep concern about the safety, uh, through that patch of windy road as you're near, uh, Red Mountain Park and leading into that neighborhood. Um, I had talked with the residents before. I know that you and I, along with the prior neighborhood president and BDOT, Aldot, we all walked that pathway when I first came into office around 7, 18, 19. But the road continues to deteriorate. And, um, so if we could get some type of update from BDOT. And I know that my office, we have been asked to write letters of support. I know that BDOT is trying to secure federal monies, federal grants to improve that roadway, but that just doesn't seem to be enough information that's comforting. I'd like to be able to give some comfort and information to the residents that have to drive that path.
We'll do a couple of things. We'll follow up with, um, Director Fowler. Uh, we will give you detail in writing, and you'll probably get a follow-up call from me. And then I'll call Madam President again. She reached out to me actually top of last week, and very detailed information about the issue. So, we'll follow her and follow up with you.
I appreciate that. And also, I think there's been some, um, what do we say, lost in translation, uh, some communication that may have not been relayed. And I would like for it to be sure that this information is coming from BDOT and from our office so that we could kind of dispel some of the information that has not been.
We can just talk to her together.
Thank you.
We'll talk to her together.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, my question's easy. Uh, the new garbage carts, excuse me, not garbage carts, recycling carts that are on their way, will residents who have requested one be notified that they have been honored with a cart? Or will it just show up in front of their house one day?
Yeah. Easy question. I agree. I'm gonna get you an answer. And I'll get you an answer within the next 10 minutes or less.
Yeah, because a lot of people have, I mean, are thinking about recycling and wondering what happened to their request they put in a year or two ago online, and so.
Mr. President, I'll get the answer to all nine of y'all.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody wants to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Along those same lines, um, I think it's, uh, council would appreciate, uh, an update on, uh, our route optimization, um, software that Public Works, um, you know, has been, uh, working on developing, um, you know, as part of that conversation, we've talked about, uh, moving to an, an opt-in system for brush and rubbish collection, uh, and potentially also recycling, so, um...
All right, that did take 10 minutes. Um, the residents will receive notice, um, related to, um, recycling bin before it's actually put, um, in their front yard. Related to route optimization update and the option to opt-in, we will get that information from Director Gates today as well. An update. Um, I actually know as much as you do, so look forward to all 10 of us getting an update.
Okay.
Your, um, I think your colleague has a follow-up to that point.
Well, I do. Someone collared me yesterday about the people who do not take their uniform garbage carts in. They leave them in the street waiting for the next pickup. And this lady commented that she takes them back up to their houses and puts them up by their house, and they move them back out into the street. Now, she wanted to know, what is the city going to do about this? Can we just confiscate them back? They belong to us, they don't belong to them. So if they're, if they're incapable of following the rules, what can we do?
There's an actual, and forgive me for not, um, memorizing this, but when you all, when we collectively went through this process and agreed, um, to the uniform carts, it actually was an ordinance passed, which included the rules on what you're supposed to do after, and attached that if you violate that rules, um, what the, I guess, assessment could be. Um, let me actually get the information and, and reshare that with the council, but as well as have a conversation, um, with, um, code enforcement, Public Works slash PEP, um, to give notice to those people. And then if the notice doesn't work, like, here's the rule, um, then to assess that person, no different than any, any other environmental violation. We just have to up the ante on holding people accountable. But there are, there's an actual ordinance that says this is what you're supposed to do, and if you don't, this is what happens.
Yeah. I know their rules, and she knows their rules, but the people who are doing it seem to have forgotten that there are rules. And most of them appear to be rentals, therefore, the new tenant may not know dearly.
That's fair. So the education piece is also important. And I think it, I think it does us, the city, well to communicate with landlords about, you know, every day note, every 30-day notice or when you get a new, um, new tenant, this should be included in information you send out about the, um, about the bin.
Good, thank you.
Let me, um, I owe you some information on the route optimization. And do me a favor, I want you to text the language to me, if you don't mind. Make sure I get the, I got my note here, but I want to make sure my answer comports with the actual question.
Yes, sir.
Please do that today for me.
Okay. Council Williams, did you have a follow-up as well?
I did not, but I was.
Yes, don't, yeah, did not.
Any opportunity?
While I got you here, Randall, no, no, no. Thanks for the follow-up on that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent or routine and gon, and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, citizens interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Ms. Clerk, please read through the items on our consent agenda.
Consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Please note that on item number three, um, the address should be 616 29th Street South. That's 616 29th Street South. Page three, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Page four, items 10, 11, and 12 are on consent. Page five, item 13 is on consent. Uh, page six, items 16, 17, and 18 are on consent. Uh, please note that, um, items 16, 17, and 18 were recommended by the Budget and Finance Chair. Page seven, items 17, I'm sorry, items 19, 20, and 21 are on consent. And same with item 20, recommended by the Budget and Finance Chair. And please strike the discretionary District 2 and put City Council Department for the funding source. Page eight, we have items 22 and 23 on consent, recommended by the Budget Finance Chair, number 23. Page nine, items 24, 25, and 26 are on consent. Page 10, items 27, 28, and 29 are on consent. Page eleven, items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are on consent. Uh, page twelve, items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight are on consent. Page thirteen, items thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four are on consent. Page fourteen, we have items forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty on consent. Uh, page fifteen, items fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six are on consent. Page sixteen, items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one are on consent. Page seventeen, items sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five are on consent. Uh, page eighteen, items sixty-seven and six, I'm sorry, sixty-six and sixty-seven are on consent. Please withdraw item sixty-eight. And page nineteen, items sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one are on consent. And we have one addendum item, I think, yeah.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counsel Williams.
Can we please remove item number nineteen and, uh, item twenty-nine?
So item nineteen is on page seven. Twenty-nine is on page ten. Okay. Um, Counsel Moore.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, remove items sixty-one and sixty-two. I could have overlooked it, but I didn't see any, uh, other supporting documents for those two items. Really just trying to find out what proposed, yeah, just those items.
Okay. Counselor Abbott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mr. President. I just wanted to ask really a question about item, uh, seventeen, eighteen, and seventeen, eighteen, and, well, that one was taken care of, seventeen, eighteen, are these discretionary funds or? Like eighteen says discretionary, I think they're mine, but it doesn't say they're mine. And then item seventeen, is that discretionary?
Mr. President, they're looking at us because those are our items. Uh, item seventeen, uh, Counselor Abbott is a discretionary item. And item seventeen appears to be a discretionary item for, uh, Counselor Quinn, District Five.
Okay, well, if we could put that on the agendas so that we can know that, it would be great. Just whose discretionary is it, if it is discretionary?
Yes, ma'am.
Seems simple, but it's not.
And what was the other item? Item eighteen? Item eighteen is the same, that is a District Three project.
It sounds real familiar, but it doesn't say.
It does, it has your handwriting all over it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then item, um, on twenty-seven, on page ten. It says it's discretionary, but then it's submitted by the city attorney and recommended by the re- mayor and didn't come to committee? Is that, is that right?
That additional item, uh, was approved by the Committee Chair of Budget and Finance, Counsel Smithman. Uh, just kind of with those five or six contracts that were approved by the Chair of Budget and Finance, there was a delay in those items coming back from OCA. And so we worked with OCA, uh, and the Chair of Budget and Finance to have those items before the council, before waiting for the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting because the counselors, maybe with the exception of you, uh, had some concerns about the delay of the items coming before Budget and Finance and the council sooner than today.
Okay, that answers that question. And item twenty-nine, on page ten?
Yeah, it's off consent.
It's already off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have a check mark next to it and didn't notice it. And sixty-seven on page eighteen. Just, uh, want to have an understanding why we have payment of outstanding invoices, such a long list of them? What is this?
Mr. President, if we can.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Mayor.
Satisfy your colleague, relate to item sixty-seven, if we can take it off consent, we'll be sure to get it, have an answer for you by the time. Uh, it comes to number six, item sixty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, so let's just take sixty-seven off.
All right.
It makes it sound like we don't pay our bills and I know that can't be true.
Well, it's not true. There you go.
Good. But we, I still want to answer. And that's all, Mr. President.
All right. We also have items one through nine that are public hearing items that are on our consent agenda. Do any member, uh, of the public wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? All right, we'll consider it. Uh, Counsel Abbott.
Yeah, I did want to ask, and this may not be the appropriate place, but item seventy-two, our public hearing that we published and forgot to put on the agenda, can we move it up to first so that all the people can?
Yes, ma'am, I intended to do, to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um. Seventy-three is an addendum item, it's a travel item. Seventy-two is a public hearing on the closure of Twentieth Street.
Okay, I must have a revised copy.
Uh, right, right, there was a revised agenda that was sent out yesterday that included that item.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, add item seventy-three to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Which item?
Seventy-three, it's a addendum item, um, for travel. Okay. All right, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
One second, please. All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Our first item is item number fourteen, please.
Item fourteen.
Uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, uh, I'd like to take item seventy-two out of order.
Item seventy-two. Item seventy-two, an ordinance authorizing the closure of Twentieth Avenue South to vehicular traffic access at point approximately one hundred and ninety feet from its intersection, Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard South and here a lot of parties. Motion on the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, um, so this is a public hearing item. And it, any members of the public, uh, who would like to speak for and against, uh, we will welcome those comments now. So if you guys want to come to the lectern, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. The, your time will be displayed on the monitors behind us. I'm sorry, yes. Yes. Yes, yes.
Good morning, my name is Lisa Lewis.
Pull the mic down.
My name is Lisa Lewis and I live at two thousand twentieth Street South, which means I'm on the corner of Twentieth Street and Twentieth Avenue. So what we're talking about really affects me because I get hit on both sides. You know, I'm really worried that the neighborhood does not have rights because everybody else seems to have rights. Well, I have a right to have this and I have a right to that. We're sitting here, we're in our neighborhood, I've been there for almost twenty-five years and I feel like our rights are not being addressed because everybody thinks they have the right to make that a commercial driveway for a business and it's cut through, cut through central for all these people trying to escape the traffic light. People speed, speed around that corner, I've had three cars in my yard. One took out a Boxwood Planet in forty-one. Anyway, I'm just, I love my neighborhood, but I'm concerned that we're losing our neighborhoods. We now have, by hook or crook, I don't know how, but we have, you know, a storage unit building. We have a huge car wash and then we have Vulcan staring down above it. So yes, come to Birmingham, see our best attraction, have your car washed and you can store something. I just, I feel like we're losing our neighborhoods, I feel like I don't have a right anymore. I feel like the traffic, the, the trucks coming up, well, we just won't even go into that. But, um, please, I, I don't know what can be done. We don't have the money to fight the big folks that have after-hours meetings with attorneys and all this kind of stuff. And I'm just, I'm just hoping that somebody will look after us and our rights because we love our neighborhood and this is really destroying our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name's Janet Gavan, I live at nineteen thirty-five Twentieth Avenue South. I've been there approximately five years and the traffic has always been bad cutting through there. And I think with the car wash going in, it's going to make it much worse. But I know the priority first is to have a light with an arrow put, turning onto Diaper Row. And, um, because I think people started cutting through there because they had a hard time turning left. But if there was a left turn arrow, I think, you know, people would, would not cut through there as much. But I really, we really want to have a gate put in there, um, as soon as possible, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, um, my name is Trisha Portwees, I live at nineteen twenty-three Twentieth Avenue South. I am the third house directly behind this new, uh, car wash, so I will be directly impacted. So what we're guessing or estimating by their estimates, three hundred additional cars per day coming through our road or through their business. Some will, mo- most likely coming down our road because it is very difficult to exit Twentieth Avenue South onto Richard Arrington Boulevard, whether you're taking a right or a left. I do it every day, uh, and different times during the day, it is difficult, I'm sorry. The man that owns the car wash was told these things many times in person, and I did myself when he kind of presented that to us. We know the road, we know that area, we've lived there, I lived there twenty years and it has increasingly gotten worse. This car wash will make it impossible. We have many short-term and long-term rentals. One specifically is down the street and has six to eight cars that are long-term rental that park their large trucks on the road and it is difficult to get us through and let alone anybody else through. So if we have lines in a nice Saturday, warm Saturday, it's pretty, it's beautiful, what do you do? You go get your car washed, there, there's usually lines. And I anticipate that I am not able to get out of my driveway when I choose to because I have a right to. Because there's going to be lines of people wanting to get in and out. That, that's very disrespectful and I know that the guy talked about his Christian values and all his Christian stuff. Be a Christian, be respectful. To the residents that know this property, the man that owns the car wash does not live in the state of Alabama. He didn't even know what was twenty-first or twentieth. And if you have not seen the property, I would suggest each of you take a drive through Twentieth Avenue South and twenty-first. See what they've done, see what they're doing. They have had to raise twentieth, twen- excuse me, twenty-first, twenty feet up using retaining walls. It's going to now going to have that building on top of it and look, you know, pretty bad. But at least the gate will help the residents. And if you've noticed, the people, the, the sign above the door, this is about the people that live here, not the businesses that want to override, you know, our, our right to own property and have a sanity of being able to get in and out of our driveway. So I, I encourage you to take a look, um, and, uh, so the other, the other issue, now if you've had car washes, I get my car washed because I like a clean car. It's just not, this is not the location for it, but here we are. There's also, if you've noticed, if you've go there, I, I go to car washes and I take in twenty minutes or whatever. And I do notice drug activity, so that is now coming to our area. So if we have the gate, I'm in for the gate, that drug activity is not going to come to our, our area. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I will because I live two houses before Tricia. I live in the house right next to where the tidal wave is going. I've been against it from the beginning, I was against the storage unit. I'm just amazed that it's gotten this far. I don't know of any barrier that's being put between the car wash and the neighborhood, which affects my house completely. I've owned that house for thirty years and upgraded constantly. The gate would help very much, I don't know how, right now I'm renting it to a very good renter and I don't know how they're going to get out of the driveway without the gate there. Same as what Tricia said. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, what's your name, ma'am? It's okay. Cindy Funderburke. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Antonio Corbayo. I lived in, uh, Twentieth Avenue South since two thousand and sixteen. The issue that I have with the amount of traffic that's going to come through if we don't have that gate is the, um, the young families and children and people walking dogs on Twentieth Avenue South. Uh, I work from home and my office faces the, uh, the twentieth street and Twentieth Avenue South, we're on the corner. At least every hour, there's people walking up and down our Twentieth Avenue South. On the weekends also too. Uh, we, uh, people walking dogs, uh, quite a bit. And my wife has mentioned it last week, she said, oh, when you see more people walking dogs, yeah, I said, I agree with you, I said. So that is my main concern. A disaster that could happen when someone, because of hot traffic, is driving on Twentieth Avenue South, is not paying attention, looking at their phones, and then somebody is walking and voila, here we go. We have, we have a problem with the fatality or someone getting injured. That's it, the increase of traffic is a problem because of the amount of activity of people in our neighborhood do outside on, on that road, on that street. It is a cut-through, that is true, um, from Richard Arrington Boulevard and also from those people on twenty-first Avenue South, they don't want to go through that light, they want to go through our neighborhood, that's what they do. Twenty-first Avenue South backs up all the way past Twentieth Street. Almost goes all the way back to the, uh, Vermont Expressway. Especially on Wednesday, that's hot traffic, I don't know why, but it's hot traffic on Wednesday. So that is the concern that I have, uh, is the, something tragic happening because the increased traffic on that road. I've, several individuals already talked about the, uh, how many, how many more cars they're going to have and that is true. And I'll just amplify that with, with rush hour traffic. It just, it's going to become a nightmare. So I, I urge you to approve the gate for our Twentieth Avenue South. Thank you.
All right, thank you, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Danny Cody, 1942, 20th Avenue South. And I just wanted to speak in support of having the gate there just because of the amount of even more traffic that, that there will be with the car wash there. And Antonio's made a lot of the points I wanted to make. But yeah, there's no sidewalks on 20th Avenue South. So everyone's kind of trying to walk in the streets and walk their dogs. And there's little kids that live across the street from my house. And that, I just think it would be a lot safer road if we had that gate there. The amount of time people save from cutting up 21st Avenue South and then cutting across 20th Avenue South to get over to Richard Arrington is, I don't think they're saving a whole lot of time by doing that. I don't think it's, it's necessary to have that connection to 21st, to, to Richard Arrington there via 20th Avenue South. And I'd be grateful if we could get a gate put there to make that street a little safer. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Daniel Christensen. I live at 2412 Second Avenue North. I also serve as the Central City Neighborhood Association President. I'm here to speak to you in favor of this project. I think it's a great opportunity for the city to demonstrate its commitment to putting people first. No community should be subject to the level of safe, increased safety risk, noise, and other disruptions that come from having continuous flow of through-traffic into and amongst their neighborhoods. Now, I don't particularly want to hijack this public hearing for my own benefit. But with Central City having multiple buildings with an order of magnitude more households than this 20th Avenue South does, we are continuously bombarded by a level of noise and disruption from various streets that are designed more as highways than as neighborhood streets. And I implore this city to continue this commitment to putting people first that this project represents, to address not only my neighborhood, but also those that are adjacent and have a similar level of households that are subject to immense motor traffic, decreased safety from it, and the endless noise that are created by people using these roads, not as transportation, but as drag strips and entertainment. So once again, I'm entirely in favor of this project, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sally Wadby. I live at 2021, oops, sorry. Sally Wadby, 2021, 20th Avenue South. My major concern is the effect on property values on our street of the car wash itself. In addition to the car wash, it's going to have associated nuisances like the traffic. And one way to ameliorate the nuisances will be to block 20th Avenue South at the end. So I'm fully in favor of that, and I think it will stop the traffic, stop the, you know, at least ameliorate the diminution of value of our properties and possibly stop some of the nuisances coming through our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mike Douglas, here on behalf of Title Wave, the Car Wash. As, as y'all know, we conducted a traffic study, which is approved by the city. The installation of this gate would essentially make this an inoperable site. So we'd ask respectfully that the city deny this gate ordinance.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
I think I get, I know you guys pretty much now. We're here again. I'm John Barnacastle, 2044, 20th Avenue South. My wife Susan is in New York. We generally spend eight to 12 weeks in New York since we've been retired. When this was, hearing was set, I flew back because I knew the importance of this gate. And, and so I, I came back, and you can imagine my surprise yesterday morning when I looked at the agenda, and it's not on it. So a number of phone calls from my wife in New York, from me, from neighbors. We're assured it's on, so I thank you. I'm going to talk, I'm not going to talk all about it. You know all the reasons. Safety is the number one, number one reason. But I have a concern about the number of mistakes that have been made on just this issue in terms of notice. And I don't blame the council because I know you guys don't have that responsibility. So I implore the mayor's office to look into every department and how and why things get messed up, going back to the moratorium. I want to also say the gate, it isn't new. I can recall back 1994, 95, when McDonald's was building on that site. We requested, talked about, never went through. But as far back as that, Councilor Abbott may remember, she's been on the council that long. So I want to, I wanted to make that. Safety is the overriding concern. We have children, we have dogs. When you say 300 cars per day, and that's what we were told in 2023 for it to be feasible, the numbers from their traffic study do not add up. If you look at it, cars come in, a certain number, a certain number of cars go out. But it's, it, it doesn't add up. What happens to those cars that come in? How, what cars go down 20th? What cars go out onto Richard Arrington? So I looked up ALDOT, and they had a traffic count, all right? So you're, in 2024, you're talking ALDOT in a 24-hour period, 15,828 cars. That's both ways, and not on 20th, but on Richard Arrington. So you're talking a lot of vehicles on that. And I want to commend Councilor Alexander for your bringing up the safety of the road that you talked about. And these are the things that we need is safety. So I implore you, please vote for it. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of the items. Councilor Abbott, you have a question or a comment?
Well, I wanted to ask Mr. Douglas to come back to the podium and explain how his traffic study has anything to do with 20th Avenue, which is a residential neighborhood street.
Well, what, what was decided and agreed upon with the city is that we would add speed bumps right there. And so that would help with some of the safety concerns. And, and like I said, this has been permitted and approved. And, and Judge Hughes ordered the city to follow the normal permitting process. And this gate will make this site inoperable, which is not following the judge's order.
I'm still having difficulty understanding why you think your commercial traffic should be driving through a residential neighborhood street.
Again, the traffic study was submitted, approved, and we've agreed to put speed bumps in there.
Okay, well, that answers my question.
Okay.
Council Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize for the aid of us because I'm probably a little bit behind, and I can't get, the Wi-Fi is not working on my computer. So I'm trying to find the supporting documents that were sent out yesterday. So I apologize about me being behind. But we've already voted on this before, so I'm a little confused as to why we're, we're here again. But, but also, if, what happened where they submitted a traffic study and it was approved, and there was agreed-upon speed bumps? I mean, I guess this is a question for the administration. So did, so we, so the administration approved this plan already? And, and issued a permit according to the plan that was?
Counselor, we would need to find out from our, our BDAT team to see if that was approved, walked it down.
This goes, this goes with a larger frustration of mine because I, you know, I get so many complaints from people trying to do business in the city of Birmingham about the permitting process, about, about, about trying to get a permit, about what happens when you get a permit, about losing things when you're trying to get a permit, about if, if it's a problem, it's happened. And so I'm a little bit confused why we're, why we would have issued a permit, and then we, we've asked these folks that live in this neighborhood to come back here. This, I know I've seen a lot of these people now three or four times, which I know, I know y'all have better things to do. I signed up for this, y'all didn't. So I'm just confused as to why we're here and what permits we've issued and on what grounds we issued the permits, I guess is my question for the administration. Doesn't have anything to do with this council.
We're getting Director Fowler to come in and answer your question.
To, to the question about why we're having, I think maybe this is the second or third public hearing on this issue. I know it's the second public hearing on the gate specifically. Turns out that the last time that this came before us, there, one of the parties involved was not notified of the public hearing. So that's why we're back here again after proper notification has been sent out. So while we're waiting for Director Fowler, Counselor Tate has a question as well.
No questions. I mean, I want to second what Councilor Abbott said and in sole support of individuals that live in these neighborhoods. And a valid point was made by the first speaker. Somebody that lives out of town has no knowledge of the day-to-day traffic that flows on their street every day. I mean, I don't go there every day, but when I do go, it's pretty hard because you got traffic going both ways, very busy. But it is a shame that people, you know, come into these areas and buy property and want to inconvenience those that live in neighborhoods. That's just ridiculous. And then, you know, the neighborhoods are growing, you got small kids, and people want to enjoy their neighborhoods. And for somebody to want to come in and put, you know, I, I, it's a storage unit there and a car wash, and 300 cars moving up and down, round and round. This, 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 in my opinion, is, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with everything you guys have came to the podium to say because it, it is, it's not right at all.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Director Fowler?
Good morning. Again, my name is James Fowler. I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. I think I heard a couple of questions I want to try to address. The first is regarding just traffic studies themselves. So when a developer, regardless of the developer submits a traffic study, we're looking for the traffic impact and particularly to levels of service at intersections. And we have to treat all developments the same, whether, you know, neighbors want that development or they, they don't. We have to be consistent in how we evaluate those. And so just based on the traffic study that was submitted, in terms of degradation of the adjacent network and the levels of service at the adjacent intersections, the impact from the car wash on that specifically is not so great that that would rise to us wanting to restrict that property from being able to be developed. And so we did look at that, but it's not such a great traffic impact that we would render that property almost undevelopable. And so we approved the traffic study with the understanding that it was not necessarily going to destroy the adjacent network, which the majority of their traffic is on Richard Arrington, in particular, and then 21st Avenue. So some of their traffic is shown on 20th Avenue South, but the majority of the traffic is on Richard Arrington and 21st Avenue South. So that's why we approved the traffic study. Regarding the question of consideration of the gate after we issued the development permit, it would be very atypical for us to review a traffic study and then recommend from our desk the closure of a street. So to my knowledge, we have not done that. So that would be very atypical. We did recommend that they purchase and install speed cushions on 28, 20th Avenue. So that's a mitigation of the traffic that does use 20th. After the development was approved, the neighborhood came forward and requested a gate. And so we then initiated the process of looking at that, which again is, is just on its own, is a fairly atypical request on consideration. But we did consider the gate kind of on its own merits. And so after reviewing that, decided to approve the installation of the gate.
Counsel Williams? So, sorry to be ornery, but I'm going to cry foul of this because the, you know, this council fought for a long time for both the storage unit from being there. And then, you know, since I've been on this council, I feel like that this one block has been a constant battle. And I know Valerie probably feels the same way. And then we fought for a long time for this car wash coming in. And obviously, we did not have the legal, whatever. It, that didn't work out. But I'm really surprised to hear that after all of the years of fighting for having the traffic on these neighborhoods, that, that behind the council's back, the permits were issued to allow this to happen. And I, you know, I, we've already voted on this, so I think we know which way the vote's going to go, so everybody don't freak out. But I kind of understand where this attorney is coming from because they were issued a permit and told that they could proceed based on, you know, what was supplied. And so how are we change, you know, how are we changing the, how are we moving the goalposts like this? I mean, with the city new, because this council has fought for years about these developments coming to that corner, both the storage unit and the car wash, I believe, were separate litigation. I might be incorrect about that. And so, you know, we've tried so hard to keep that an entryway to Birmingham because Vulcan's up there. And then it was deemed that we should issue a permit to a, to a car wash and just say, we'll just slap some speed bumps down. I mean, that, that, that doesn't seem right from what this council has been trying to do since I have been on this council. So that's just an opinion. That's not a question. I'm, I'm really shocked, and I'm sorry that my computer's not working to look at these additional documents. But I'm really kind of surprised that that is what's taken place because I, I feel like that we all lose today. I mean, this council loses because we fought for this not to have it happening. The developer loses because they're, have whatever hardships going on. And the residents obviously lose too. So every, you know, everybody lost on this one, so anyway.
Attorney King.
So to be accurate, Counsel Williams, you may have forgotten that this was in litigation and a judgment was issued. And as a result of a court order, the city proceeded. So I would recommend that we go into executive session to further discuss the pending or potential litigation and legal ramifications related to this lawsuit. Not this lawsuit, but the previous lawsuit that led us to where we are today.
Which lawsuit are you referring to?
Against this same location.
Oh, no, this location.
May I ask a question before?
And that is pursuant to Section 3625a 7a 3.
Okay. Well, Counselor Clark, ask a question first before we consider it.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, James, I know that you evaluated the traffic impact study, you know, in isolation from the gate request. But now that they're both, you know, working together to impact, you know, I guess the, I mean, do you, do you see the gate as rendering the car wash business inoperable?
That's a good question. So they actually make projections in their traffic study on where their traffic is coming from. Though they do project- Um, though they do project some traffic on 20th Avenue South, so there would be some impact, uh, to the street. Uh, it's relatively minor compared to the overall traffic that they're expecting to see from Richard Arrington. Uh, so we do not expect the gate to have a significant effect on their business.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I would point out, because I have been here so long, that this neighborhood has requested a gate there before, but it died on the vine. And it has nothing to do with the car wash. Everybody knows the car wash is there. Looks like the Great Wall of China when you drive through that intersection. What the neighborhood has been dealing with for years is cut through people who want to avoid the intersection where the lights are. And lots of people pour through there. So the neighborhood has been disturbed by this in the past, and they're disturbed by it during construction. And they fear being disturbed by, by people who once again want to cut through the residential neighborhood to avoid the traffic signal. And the people who are building this, they know that because the residents have already told them. And they didn't care pretty clearly. So I just think that, you know, the people who live in this neighborhood, it's a dead-end street, but there's an attachment to 21st Avenue and that big long line of cars that people get into in rush hour. So this isn't new, but it's about to get a lot worse. I think that's the situation we have here. And yes, it has gone on forever, but I think Mr. Barnacastle pointed out that there have been a number of bumps in the road, and they weren't speed bumps either. So there we go, 24 years, I remember something.
So, um, Attorney King has recommended that if we wish to continue discussion relative to litigation, we need to go into executive session. So is there a desire to go into executive session? All right.
Get motion in a second.
We will.
What, what, which one are we doing here?
We are, we would like to vote on this item.
Okay, so.
So I believe we've already had a motion in a second.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known, but say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item 72 is approved. Next item, please. And I believe that is item 14.
Item 14. An ordinance to add a new chapter 12, uh, to Building and Housing Code lean enforcement to Title VII Building and Land Use Controls of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to implement provisions of the Code of Alabama, 1975, six inches 11 dash 70B dash one, dash 11, dash 70B dash eight, uh, to provide for the judicial interim foreclosure of municipal code enforcement and nu- nuisance abatement liens by the City of Birmingham. And this is an item of permanent operation to pass it, I need you to see.
So move.
Okay. Pardon? Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Okay, give me a second, the computer's locking up. Ms. Dees? Do you have a roll call or? I got it. Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods? Counsel President Pro team Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
I motion on the item, please.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right. Um, any discussion on this item? This is the municipal code, um, our municipal lean foreclosure ordinance, um, that we discussed recently in committee, the whole, so. Any further discussion on this? All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known, but say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item 14 is approved, item 15.
All right, item 15. An ordinance approving, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement between the City of Birmingham and Oak Hill Memorial Association dated on September the 3rd, 2024, and approved by ordinance number 24 that's 65, and amended on April the 8th, 2025 for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, and approved by ordinance number 25 that's 37, to provide an additional amount of $25,000 to work on the eastern perimeter wall in October, beginning in the corner of 13th Court North and extending down to the entrance gate on 19th Street. Uh, let's see, for a total amount not to exceed $226,297. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, I need you to see the passage.
Second.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Aye.
Uh, President Pro team Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Okay, um, Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, I see Stuart Oates is here, but I don't know if, if the chief, uh, can just, it, it says that there's maintenance and care and control of multiple cemeteries. Oak Hill, Elaton, and Eastlake Cemeteries. Is the same group that cares for Oak Hill responsible for those other cemeteries as well?
Mr. Oates, you want to come and talk to us about the?
That's what I was going to write there. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yes, there are three cemeteries, um, aside from Oak Hill that are, um, cared for. Originally, the Oak Hill Memorial Association, excuse me, uh, was established for the care of Oak Hill Memorial Association. There were agreements that were, um, made several years ago. Uh, the very first one was for the two small cemeteries, which are Eastlake and Elaton. Um, and then what Oak Hill was agreeing to was receiving the funding for the maintenance of those cemeteries, um, and then just passing that through. So all of that money went actually to the people that were doing the maintenance. And that money hasn't changed in decades. It's been $500 per month per cemetery, so 24,000 on those. And then there's the Greenwood Cemetery, uh, which was added at a later time on the same basis, uh, that we were basically just passing money through to care for that. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it does, but how much, um, of this annual appropriation goes to Oak Hill? I, I hear that it's like a mowing situation for those others.
Well.
How much annual support, and I, maybe I should?
On what you're seeing there, subtract $12,000 and that, that's the appropriation that goes to Oak Hill Cemetery.
Okay, so you get 500 a month too? No?
I'm sorry, it's 24,000, I'm sorry.
Oh, so you get 2,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just, um, and so we're adding money for that wall.
Right, we've been working on the wall. We finished this year, uh, 11th Avenue, I don't know if you've noticed, but that entire wall, all the way down, has been repointed. Um, as far as the iron railing, uh, that goes on top, that's something that hasn't been addressed. We've tried to straighten it, but right now the costs are prohibitive at what I'm looking at to rebuild it. So that's something that we need to, to consider how we're going to do that. But we are at least making sure that we take care of the stone part of that wall. And, um, this section of the wall that this is going to cover has been the most troublesome. There've actually been two breaches in that wall, major breaches, in the last 15 years that have been repaired. Uh, it's because that's, that's where a lot of the, the inside of the cemetery comes up and it becomes a, a structural wall that's holding back the earth. Um, so that is an important section for us to get covered.
Okay, well, just as walls retaining, especially retaining walls go and structural walls, you know, 25,000 isn't a lot of money, considering the amount of wall out there.
Correct.
So, uh, I just hope, you know, we're, I mean, it's such a prominent site and, um, you know, as that area continues to develop and attract more visitors, um, I just hope we'll help you keep things together over there.
Thank you, that's what we hope.
Other questions? All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All right, thank you.
All in favor, let it be known, but say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item 15 is approved. Item 19, please.
Item 19, a resolution approving?
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, item 19.
A resolution approving, authorizing the mayor to execute a funding agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, under which the BJ CPA will contract with the owner and operate, an operator of the Port Authority Terminal for the installation of a six-inch tap on a six-inch cast iron water main in the Warrior River Water Authority Service Area to support construction of a 25,000 square foot warehouse facility at the Birmingham Port Terminal to further the functions of the inland import facility on the Black Warrior River, to carry out its duties and responsibilities and other services that are required to fulfill the intent of the Port Authority Act as defined in Chapter 94 of Title 11 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, and the purpose of the funding agreement. And the city will pay the BJ CPA an amount not to exceed $125,000 for such services, provided that such funding has been approved and included in the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Motion, please.
Motion on the item.
All right, Counselor Williams?
No, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just, um, want to make, you know, it says it came to economic development, I want to make sure it actually does. But, um, you know, I think that, that one thing that we have as an asset that no one actually knows about is our inland port. And whatever we can, and literally no one knows about it. Um, and whatever we can do to support it, it's advantageous for us, um, as a city from an economic development perspective, so, but we still would like it to come to committee. That's all.
Okay, any additional questions, Counselor Abbott? You have a questioning look on your face.
Well, I do. I, it says it went to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee, is that not true?
Counselor Williams?
It's, it's okay, I'm still good with it, I just want to make sure.
Well, we should strike that anyway, if it, if it didn't happen, we shouldn't say it did. I don't know who's in charge of putting where, whether it went to committee or not, but if it's an error, we should fix it.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Okay, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known, but say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Item 19 is approved. Item 29, please.
Item 29, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a three-year agreement for the annual subscription services agreement with Sound Thinking Incorporated to provide for the renewal of hosting of the shot spotter gunshot detection location and forensic analysis service with the city. The existing agreement ends September the 30th, 2025. And this new agreement will cover shot spotter subscription services commencing October the 1st, 2025 and ending September the 30th, 2028. The city is authorized to spend an amount not to exceed $3 million, 34,920, which includes the subscription cost for the Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3A, and Phase 3B. Motion, please.
Motion on the item.
Second.
Counselor Williams?
I think Ms. Abbott has some questions, I just had a, a, a.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, do you have a question about item 29?
Well, the question I have about shot spotters, can we get more? You know, more sensors that tell where the shots are coming from? Because I know that they're put mainly around, or I think I know, used to be, they were mainly around housing communities and stuff where we had issues. But, um, you know, gunfire seems to be everywhere. So I was just wondering if there was any intention to get any additional shot spotter equipment for the city of Birmingham.
Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. To your colleague's question, Counselor Abbott, the true answer is we would like to. However, that comes with substantial costs. Contract before you is for renewal, for something we know that works. We know many, many people, um, call 911, and unfortunately, we know some who don't. And so to have this augment our ability to respond, um, to situations where, um, discharging firearms are used is very helpful. Your question's sitting around, will there be more? The answer is I don't know when, right? The contract you have is very expensive, and so when you add more, it costs more. And what we have to do is figure out when it comes to personnel costs, equipment costs, security technology costs, vests, tasers, gun purchase, and everything else related to the police department, overtime vehicles, et cetera. All of these things are calculated into what we can and can't do on a yearly basis related to public safety. Um, but I do know Chief Pickett is here and part of the conversation that he's expressed to me is we would love to have more, it's just a matter of how much, when, et cetera.
Okay, because I know when I hear gunfire in my house, I've already heard it. So if I go out and jump in my car and drive around hunting for it, it's already happened. But the shot spotter?
It works.
Yeah, works.
It works.
And so that, to me, just, I just wondered if we were looking at maybe in the next year's budget, getting some?
I, I will, I will tell you what shakes out is, uh, is that it depend, that yearly, we go through what the BPD's priorities are and they share with us. Uh, we know there's been requests lately for more personnel and more cameras. I think the next year's budget, that's proved to be beneficial to us both with you all approving more cameras, as well as the ability to hire more officers with 90 people in the current class. Um, I think the conversations, uh, will have already started about what's at the top next year. I think we should continue to talk to shot spotter too, to see what the, the organization company, to see what type of other opportunities they can have and/or give to us without breaking the bank.
Well, somebody needs to, some brilliant person needs to invent a combination camera shot spotter so that we can have them all over the place. So all the inventors out there start inventing, um.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and one other thing, which I know that I'm breaking the rules here, but the police department has the right to enforce the noise ordinance on these cars that now have taken to speeding through our neighborhoods, you know, because they can't do it out on the road because their car can be confiscated. Well, you know, those big loud, uh, mufflers that they don't have on their cars, that's a violation of the noise ordinance. So you can stop every single stinking one of them. And the motorcycles who don't have mufflers. And wake us up at 3 o'clock in the morning speeding through the neighborhoods. Just a thought.
Yes, ma'am, to your point.
Noise ordinance.
I was going to say it, even if he didn't share it with me, but he just reaffirmed what I already knew, which is that, Ms. Abbott, they, the BPD traffic enforcement team has already increased, um, tickets related to noise ordinance, um, particularly as it relates to, um, that coming from vehicles.
Well, it's really needed. I have a friend that has one of those cars, those big noisy cars. It has a switch where you turn on the noise. Can you imagine the idiocy of a manufacturer who put that on the car so that you could go roaring through the streets sounding like an idiot? But we do it. But we do it. I mean, this is the Ford Motor Company that did it and put it on their Mustangs, and I'm sure that all those other noisy cars probably have the same switch. And it makes these men feel so big and tough because they're making a lot of noise in their car. I mean, yeah. I mean, really. I never see a lady driving one of those noisy cars through the neighborhood. Sorry. I'm having, I'm having a day.
I understand. I'll come pick you up in my old school. No, not a lot of noise, not a lot of noise, not a lot of loud noise. How about that?
I like peace and quiet. I also can't sleep.
Yes, ma'am.
I notice all of them because I'm still awake.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Smitherman.
Uh, yes, I do have a question about the cost per Shot Spotter.
So, yeah, so what you see on this year's um, total is a five percent increase, is roughly about a hundred and forty-four thousand. That's just a cost that the uh, uh, Sound Thinking has increased just for, you know, the particular product.
Okay. Um, I know you can't tell us the locations, but how many do we have? Do, can we know that?
The exact number of sensors?
Yeah.
So I don't know the exact number of sensors, but we do have mapping that, that shows the coverage area and, and they do it based on square mileage.
Okay.
It's what we pay for. Uh, do you know the, is it twenty square miles? It's twenty square miles right now. Yeah.
Um, because I get the same request as Counsel Abbott for more Shot Spotters. And I don't know if that's like an educational piece telling residents like, hey, we understand you want one, but this is kinda like the formula, the process for how we determine where a Shot Spotter should be. I think that would be helpful for them.
Yeah, and we can do that in some of the neighborhood meetings, but I agree uh, with your sentiments. Uh, I think it's a tool that is very useful. And of course, it is very expensive, but it's, you know, hopefully with uh, time and efforts and increased revenue in the city, we'll be able to afford it. Um, but uh, it is, it's something that, that's definitely a tool that we use. And, you know, to your point of, I guess how the deployment of it, what we try to do is look at what areas are. We're receiving the nine-one-one calls. And to Mayor's point, there are some areas where we do respond to shootings, but we don't get a nine-one-one call. We identify those areas as a priority so that we can know in real time uh, when shots are, are going off in those areas.
How often does that happen? Where there isn't a nine-one-one call, but a Shot Spotter gives you the signal?
It varies, but I would say possibly maybe ballpark thirty, forty percent. But Shot Spotter adds more value than just a call. It tells us how many shots have been fired. It tells us the type of gunfire it is. It could be rapid fire. It could be different calibers, for example. So all these things we look at during our investigation. And it, it also gives us an ex- exact, almost an exact location of where the shots came from so that we can literally walk to that, that exact location to be able to recover shell casings.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out the right way to ask this. I kinda would like to know the stats for even my district, just to see like how many shots are happening in my district, what kind of gunfire, because I'm just very, because we don't really get as many public safety numbers as what we used to. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Chief Pickett, um, several months ago, or maybe it was a few weeks ago, the council approved um, an agreement with a consultant that would um, expand our capacity in terms of utilizing drones um, to you know, get eyes in the sky per se uh, more quickly than we can get a patrol unit on, on a case. And that's one of the things that's important in a situation like this is because, you know, the, when gunfire happens, it's usually in a matter of seconds, you know. Uh, so um, you know, in a, in a, in getting uh, patrol officer on site, you know, there's often plenty of time for the perpetrator of the gunfire to put the fire on way. We know in that in Alabama, you know, a, a law enforcement officer has to have eyes on the incident, um, you know, in order to um, you know, take action, um, to actually, they have to witness the, the incident to take action. So um, is there coordination or the potential for coordination between Shot Spotter and our drone capabilities to more quickly get visibility of what's going on at those locations?
Yes, sir. So we uh, had that exact location with all, when we were looking to see which uh, drone company would, would be most ideal. That's one of the main questions we asked is uh, is it able to be integrated with our CAD system, uh, so it can be more autonomous? And the answer is yes. The short answer is yes. So that's definitely one of the ways that we wanna utilize uh, the drones once approved and everything's in place. Is when those shots go out, we can get a drone, you know, over in that area and, and just observe what's going on, who's leaving the scene, just what we see as officers are responding.
Great. Counsel Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I think that was uh, gonna bring some clarity to my question, uh, because I know Counsel Abbott said that, you know, the inventors need to create a Shot Spotter that has a camera, but to my knowledge, don't we currently have those already deployed? Like, don't we have Shot Spotters that as soon as shots go off, it immediately begins recording in that area for that very reason?
So there's, there's a software that they're working on to do that. I, I don't think they've mastered it quite yet. Uh, I, I think it might be in the testing phases as it relates to Shot Spotter actually coordinating with a company that can do that. But what we do have is the areas where our cameras are deployed. They have three hundred and sixty-degree cameras right now.
Right.
So we'll be able to, with our real-time crime center, if it's in the Shot Spotter area and we have maps overlayed to where we can see where we have cameras, so we can go ahead and have an analyst zoom in in that area and uh, be able to give us some feedback as we're responding on the ground.
Got you. And, I mean, I know throughout our, our city, we have different areas where, you know, these types of things are happening, gunshots, things of that nature. Um, I know that, you know, in my district, I'm seeing where, you know, there's a lot of this type of activity taking place in areas that are vacant, right? Like where there's, you know, not a lot of houses, not a lot of businesses. It's just open woods or, you know,
Right.
just vacant areas. Uh, will we also have, you know, uh, those areas secured as well with this?
So what we've looked at, uh, and you bring up a great point, but what we've identified in our deployment of the two hundred cameras that we, that we've, you know, had approved, is those areas of isolation where we uh, observe uh, cars being dumped after being stolen. Or when we see that, we see, we've recovered shell casings, a, a lot of different caliber shell casings that appear to be you know, appear to be, you know, dated or have been out there for a while. We have deployed uh, cameras to those areas. Of course, as we identify more, you know, we'll request more. But that is something, that's a factor that we consider is making sure we have cameras in those uh, isolated areas where it's, you know, not many homes and not many, not a lot of foot traffic, but we, we know incidents occur there. We have intentionally uh, focused on those areas and we've, we have them in the plans uh, to have cameras deployed. Some have already been installed and we do have them in the plan. So we definitely try to identify those locations. And in those locations, a lot of times, that's where we end up finding a lot of stolen cars that have been abandoned.
Thank you. All right. Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Pickett, I just want to commend you and your team on your swift action of the isolated incident that take, take, take place, took place in District Seven. So really appreciate your team and um, you know, bringing the subject to um, apprehending the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you all so much for what you do, um, and what you continue to do daily.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Yes, Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. I did want to thank you. I know you responded so swiftly and I appreciate the officers that you had to go out to talk to the Jones Valley Neighborhood and the community and the additional officers that were in surrounding, had neighborhood meetings that week. And so we appreciate again the swift action and um, just the support. I mean, a moment I asked you, you went into action to be sure that that neighborhood itself also had the information they needed. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Williams.
So to reversing back to Ms. Abbott's point, you know, a, a large part of the camera program that we recently passed and we ended up delaying was because of um, you know, obviously the technology, no one has to invent it. It's been invented. It exists. There's got to, you know, when we're passing these large million-dollar technology packages, uh, you know, my request was with the, with, when we passed the camera one, was that we find a way to art, to get the technology that's already out there to utilize the integration of Shot Spotter. And so I wanna make sure I, you know, I find, now that I'm repeating myself on that, because we're asking if the technology exists. You know, it is very important that all these things work together, as you know, Chief. Um, I know that we need to get that drone um, uh, thing back in front of us and I ask um, uh, the, you know, office, whoever it is, you know, get it back in front of us because it, it is one thing that I have really um, been happy to see is that as this council has passed the largest budget that your organization has ever had, um, to see the uptick in the amount of technology that the department has, has invested in. Because we have had a deficit in technology, in my opinion, in BPD. And um, I think that the technology is proving that it works. We know that Shot Spotter works because we've had it ever, you've had it forever. And, and we know with the integration of Niven and actually getting shell casings that we can actually solve a couple cases. I mean, we, we know that because we're seeing those results, but you know, as we continue to approve large multimillion-dollar contracts, my ask is, is that, you know, we, we don't do what we've always, and I'm not saying that, I'm not, but my ask, you know, when we approved the camera contract, my ask was that we do integration with Shot Spotter. That was my one ask. And so I wanna reiterate that ask because it doesn't make sense for the council to have passed all of these packages and not have the follow-through on that side. But I do think that once we do get that drone um, back in front of us and we get that passed and hopefully we cannot just look at it for next fiscal year, Mr. Mayor. I know with, with, with his size budget that there should be some availability to look at it in a midterm capacity. And I hope that we can continue to invest the way that, that um, that y'all have as a collective in getting to where we need to be from a technology standpoint. I don't even think, I don't think we are where we need to be yet. I think we have a long way to go because there's been so many years of a deficit in investing in technology. As most of that, you know, funding went to actually um, employee cost. But I think that uh, that, that as we continue to invest in these different technologies, we're actually seeing the results. And that's really promising to see from Mr. Mayor, your administration chief, everybody else involved. So my request is integration.
Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think to that point, I know we did have a lot of conversations. Guess we've been here a while now, huh? Uh, but over the years around kinda increasing our technology. I think that has happened. I think uh, but to my recollection, we have FUSIS, correct? Okay. So I think that, that's a tool that can integrate a lot of those things. And so I think we're continuing on that track, but we do want to just make sure that we are um, continuing to provide that. Because that's been, I think we've seen the results of that. Y'all have been able to kinda be creative in solving some things and just having as many tools as possible to be one proactive preventative, but you know, when things do happen, you can quickly have some tools already in place to solve those things and um, make the analysis easier and more efficient. So uh, but yeah, uh, uh, second that, we definitely want to identify any existing gaps in our um, technology ecosystem to improve our service to the residents of Birmingham.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you. Counsel, thank you.
We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item twenty-nine is approved. Um, let's do item sixty-one and sixty-two together.
Item sixty-one. A resolution is accepting and approving the bid of A E L L C doing business eight tree service Birmingham, Alabama for the tree removal services. Bid line numbers two, three, five, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-eight as needed. And unit prices on file in the office of the Assistant Purchasing Agent for a period of one year for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest, most responsive bid submitted, authorized the mayor to execute necessary documents on behalf of the city. Item sixty-two, a resolution is accepting and approving the bid of House of Tree Expert LLC, Alabama, Alabama for the tree removal services. Bid line numbers one, five, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty-two, and thirty-two as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchase, Assistant Purchasing Agent for the period of one year for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest, most responsive bid submitted and authorized the mayor to execute necessary documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
All right. Counsel Moore.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. Um, I was really just trying to find out exactly where these um, tree removals were coming from, but I just received an email. So I'm good.
Okay. Pro Tem Alexander.
Yes, I just have a follow-up question for each of these items. And I was looking for more information, so I apologize, my book may not be complete. But as an end result, now that we bid it for these services, what is the follow-up? Because I know sometimes we have trees that fall down due to storms or to do different things that occur. And for example, we just talked about Venice, we have some items that's still near the roadway. So is this contract, they take any of those items with them, like any debris that remains? Or the contract is just a cut, do the cuts?
Mr. President. So, so Madam Pro Tem, so from what our DPW team told us, some of these are remaining items that have been, that have not been able to be addressed because of the limitations on the crew because it was so many. So if there's additional items, we probably need to get those from you all, but they're going back and getting the items that were already in the queue that hadn't been picked up. So I think to your question, yes, they're gonna be coming back. The contractors will be coming back to get the items that remain.
Okay. Because I believe sometimes the, with residences, was myself, when we see the response and we see that the cuts are made, the question is, is that gonna come back with a regular bulk trash pickup? Or is that going to be part of the cleanup of the debris when that time? So maybe that's what you just said.
The cleanup, right.
That's the clarification that we needed because I, I also need to be able to follow up. Do we need to call another three-one-one request later when we see that the debris is still remaining?
I would recommend that just to ensure that it is in the queue, especially if you don't see resolution shortly after the passage of this. Yes, I would recommend it just to ensure that it happens.
Okay, because we'll have several, because I do know that we have some, and I just don't mean to beat this to death, but um, we have the initial debris, now it's turned from green to brown, and now there's new foliage that's growing in the middle of the original. So just wanted to be sure I can for myself and for our residents, we need to call that back. We don't just need to assume that that's gonna be the direct result of that cleanup.
And we can, we can match up against what's already in the queue.
Okay.
So if you already know of some of those addresses, you can forward them to us.
We do.
And we can test it up against what, what's already uh, in the queue for them to address.
Okay, we'll be sure to follow up with that. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yep. Ms. Moore.
Yeah, so I did get a chance to look at this. And so I, one of the reasons why I pulled this off is because uh, as Madam Pro Tem said, we have so many individuals or so many residents that call us about tree removals, uh, fallen trees, things of that nature. And so um, wanted to just ask, number one, are these all just uh, public right-of-way areas that are being focused on here?
So based on the information we have, it's not just limited to public right-of-ways.
Okay.
But we can get the specifics if there's an area that you have, but it's not- So, but we can get the specifics if there's an area that you have, but it's not just limited to public right-of-ways.
Okay. And, and I, I asked that question because, you know, a lot of times we'll have, you know, individuals that'll have trees that, um, may be on, you know, public property or something, but it's, um, it's adjacent to them. Um, and it's, it affects them negatively. And so, uh, obviously we've had a lot of trees to fall, a lot of trees to, you know, be damaged to where they're leaning and could possibly be, uh, a danger. Um, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of residents that want to see the city be able to do something about it. Um, and so, uh, I think that, you know, this is great. And I'm, I'm grateful that we, you know, we're going through with cleaning up stuff that was already in the queue. Uh, but I also think that there's, there's going to be an expectation, you know, that, you know, we kind of address, uh, further issues or, you know, uh, foreseen issues, uh, that people may have. And so, um, I would, I would even ask that we kind of educate people on, you know, like our process of how we go about choosing, uh, these different, uh, trees to, to address so that there's, we can, I guess, set the expectation, um, of residents of how we deal with these issues.
Counsel Woods, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, one point of clarification, is this simply to pick up a tree that's already on the ground? Or, uh, Counsel Abbott, if you close your ears, does this involve, uh, cutting of the trees?
My understanding doesn't involve any cutting.
Okay. And so it mentioned, uh, unit pricing, but what I see is like specific locations.
Right.
Um, is there any unit pricing that could be applied going forward as needed?
We can follow up with the team. From my understanding, the unit pricing is for each of the, the ones that are in the queue, there's a specific cost based on what's in the queue and what's, what's needing to be picked up. So that's where the unit pricing is coming from. It's, it's the individual address, location where they're going to be doing the pickup.
Oh, well, so basically this is just limited to what these existing, what, 39 locations?
Right. It's, it's, it's literally based on the cost per location. They've, they've already assessed the cost per location.
But based, based on this, you don't, we don't have the ability to, if there's something next week, next month, to go and address that via this agreement.
So that's what I was referring to, that Counsel Alexander was talking about. If you all could forward that to us so we can make certain that the department provides the assessment for those, so we can try to get those in the queue too.
So I guess my thing is if there's a way to, whether that's like a quantity or truckload or like having some sort of unit price to where it's already approved and just be tied to a budget. So like the way this is done, every time you got a certain location, you have to get the location and go through a process. Whereas if it was, you know, this one truckload is $500, they, you know, they just have a set ability to do it. But that was my question. So I think this one is, is, um, location-based.
And size.
And, uh, no cutting trees down.
Right.
If I could say, just to piggyback, I'm glad that you asked for the clarity on that because that was some of my misunderstandings. So I want to be sure we're clear. So the expectations we have of this, so it looks like something may come to us again because of what's left?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Because these are ones based on what's in the queue. There's a cost per one. But we do want to know the ones that you all are seeing or hearing so we can go ahead and get those in.
Because that's very important. So hopefully these will pick up the ones that have grown and grown and grown again. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Abbott, then I'll come to you, Counsel Smithman. Turn your mic on, please.
Okay. So, trees. So what I understand is, is that our three or four crews for cutting trees and maintaining trees is down to one now? Is that accurate?
I'm sorry, Counsel, can you repeat your question?
Yeah. Our crews available for cutting and maintaining trees, are we actually down to only one crew now?
Uh, so yes. So the crews that, that's a part of the reason why the staff wanted to use these contractors to remove the burden off of the, the crews that do the cutting and pruning so that they can go back to doing that and we can use these contractors to do the pickups and removals.
Okay. So is it our intention to let horticulture and urban forestry wither on the vine? Or are we going to try to repopulate our crews? Cause we used to have four.
Repopulation is always the, the standard, Counselor.
Yeah. Okay. So we used to have crews of arborists who had certifications. Are we still pursuing certified arborists or training our people to be arborists?
Both.
As we rock along? Because we're working on the new tree ordinance right now and we're going to be looking for people to populate the tree commission. And, um, you know, the intentions for the future, we had an horticulture and urban forestry department and we had a mayor who put it in public works. And, um, you know, it's never been the same. So that's true with many things, but the replanting of trees is what I'm interested in hearing about from the administration is what are we going to do to repopulate our city with trees, appropriate trees for the locations? Do we have a plan or are we just busy cleaning up a mess?
We'll follow up with the mayor of the department to share the plan with you, Counsel.
Yeah, we need to know what the plan is because street trees are important. Not only do they clean the air and make our neighborhoods look better, they actually cause people to drive slower. Having street trees on your street. So worrying about who's going to rake the leaves isn't our only issue. We need to repopulate our city with trees so that being Tree City USA means something. That's all.
Counsel Smithman.
Uh, it's really more like a comment or request, um, in addition to what Counsel Moore said, because we get a lot of calls about residents about tree removals and tree limbs, but it's more of a neighbor to neighbor issue that needs to be resolved and not just, oh, this is on a city railway. And I would love if we could just, a door hanger or something, just explain that, a sample letter almost to help the residents instead of it falling kind of on us to give them that type of letter. I would love that. And if we replant trees, it'd be a, just the idea to maybe do a couple of fruit trees. Um, that way, you know, that's, that goes to food insecurity, etc., just people getting an orange off the tree instead of it just being just a plain tree. So those are just two of my requests.
This way.
Thank you.
All right. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Items 61 and 62 are approved. Item 67, please.
Item 67, a resolution accepting and approving payment to Williams Fire and Apparatus, Ashland, Alabama, for the payment of outstanding invoice numbers, 27, 751, 17, 999, 20, 27, 80, 33, 27, 80, 64, 28, 069, 23, 744, 28, 502, and 27, 6118, totaling $46,641.75 for the Equipment Management Department. Motion, please.
I'm of approval.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Abbott.
Well, this is the one we were waiting to find out why we had outstanding invoice numbers that we were paying all in one big lump. There were a lot of invoices.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor. So, uh, so it's a couple of things on this. Um, so first of all, the Department of Equipment Management noticed, noted that this is for fire apparatus and that that takes a little bit of time to complete. So they had a soft close. And while the soft close was happening, they were waiting on the purchase order to come in from Williams Fire. Um, so they noted that, um, as they were waiting on their PO, they had a price increase due to the tariffs and that, that's what created the delay. So the reason there was a buildup on the invoices was awaiting on the new invoices. Um, but they're in the process of securing those from Williams as we speak. So that's why there was a buildup in the number of invoices paid.
Oh, so the explanation is, thank you, President Trump. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Um, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Item 67 is approved. And, um, note, our, our addendum item was approved on the consent agenda. So that completes, completes our business items. Uh, we're ready for announcements. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we have one neighborhood meeting in District Eight this week. That's the Graymont Neighborhood Meeting tomorrow at 4:30 PM in the Smithfield Library. Uh, this afternoon at 3:00 PM, you can join the Birmingham Bar Association at, at the Carver Theater to pay tribute to the survivors of the tragic 1963 bombing at the 16th Street Baptist Church. This free in-person event will be a heartfelt gathering to honor the survivors of the bombing. The event will consist of two panel discussions, a special video presentation, and a cocktail reception to follow. Uh, save the date for the Third Annual Blues at the Ballpark Blues Event. It's going to happen on Sunday, September 28th. Uh, you can come out to Rickwood for some down home blues featuring two headliners this year. Uh, the Mississippi Delta's own Gary Burnside and the legendary Mr. Bobby Rush. Gates open at 2:00 PM and the show starts at 3:00 PM. Bring your lawn, lawn chairs and dancing shoes for a great time at Rickwood. And on a somber note, um, you know, Mayor already talked about this. I'd like to ask my colleagues to join me, uh, in approving a resolution of sympathy for the family of Chef Michael Glenn. He was a longtime restaurateur, caterer, executive chef, creative extraordinaire, and dearly beloved friend whose creations were enjoyed throughout the Birmingham area and beyond. Um, anyway, he designed, he, he transitioned on September 12th at the age of 66 after several months, um, of, uh, extended illness.
Move for you, Se.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Clark. Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, let me see. So UAB Live Health Smart, Alabama, uh, says that they need volunteers, uh, help make a difference. Join as we bring a colorful new interactive mural to life on the basketball courts in Norwood Park. We're painting clothes. We will not provide, uh, we will provide paint and brushes on October the 3rd and 4th from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. Uh, the location will be Norwood Park, 1428, 28th Street North, Birmingham, Alabama, 35234. Uh, if you would like to RSVP, RSVP, please call Paula LP at UAB.edu. Um, again, Paula LP at UAB.edu by September 26th. Uh, we also have the Men of Praise Annual Concert on the second Sunday in November, um, second Sunday in November, November 9th, uh, at Greater Emmanuel Temple, 7901 Second Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama, 35206. So again, the Men of Praise Annual Concert on November the 9th. Go check them out. Uh, and then we have the Gospel in the Gallery featuring Kelvin Johnson and Friends in concert, October 12th at 2:00 PM. Uh, will take place at Encore Theater and Gallery, 1604 Second Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, 35203. Uh, $25 includes brunch and orders. All right. And that concludes my announcement.
Thank you.
Oh, and we do not have community development meeting today. Uh, and we do have park and recreation meeting tomorrow. All right.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Moore. Counsel Abbott.
That's, that's good news. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 24th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, we have at 6:00 PM, the Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting at Highlands United Methodist Church. And next Monday, September 22nd at 6:30, the Crestwood South Neighborhood Meeting will be held at the Levite Jewish Community Center. If you have any concerns or issues about anything you see going on in the city that's not a police issue, call 311 or download the wonderful My BM 311 app so that you can add photos and the description worded as you would like to have it. And, um, that's all for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Abbott. Counsel Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next, uh, Budget and Finance Meeting will be on Monday, September 22nd at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. The Five Point South Neighborhood will meet today at 6:00 PM in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. And the Tidusville Library will host a senior fitness class every Friday at 10:45 AM. All levels are welcome. Um, this Saturday, there will be a Colla Green Cookoff. This is hosted by Urban Ministry and the Westin Community Church. Uh, this will be from 11 to 4 at Urban Ministry located at 1228 Cotton Avenue Southwest. They will have music, line dancing, free food, sweet potato drop, and Colla Green, uh, cook-off, um, competition as well. And then tonight, there will be a Stop the Violence Panel from 6 to 8 PM at the Kappa House Hall Complex at 45 Sixth Avenue South, 35205, across the street, um, from the gas station, um, not too far from Memorial Park into this field. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Pro Tem Alexander.
Yes, thank you very much. These are announcements for District Seven. Today, September 16th, we have one neighborhood association meeting. That's the Green Acres Neighborhood. They will meet at 6:30 PM at the Living, the Lifting Christ Worship Center. And again, that's in Green Acres. On Thursday, I'll be joining the members of the Germania Park Neighborhood where they'll be hosting an honorary luncheon that will be at the Arlington Historical Home and Gardens. That's at 30, 331 Cotton Avenue. This is always a great event where the Germania Park Neighborhood honorary honors residents in their area and will perform service to the community. So I'll be glad to join them. That's again at Thursday, September 18th. We have two neighborhood meetings on Thursday evening. That's the Hillman and Hillman Park Neighborhood Associations. They meet jointly at 5:00 PM at Hillman Station. And that's actually, um, Hopewell Baptist Church. Thank you. And my last thing, I do want to congratulate Counselors Tate and O'Quinn on a wonderful event. I know they're both going to talk about it in their, um, their remarks today, but Sunday afternoon, I think every cowgirl was out there at Legion Field and we had a great time. It was a wonderful event. And so I just wanted to thank you all for bringing that to the city. I saw, heard so many comments and I truly enjoyed it. And, um, it was a great time. If you can't line dance in Birmingham, you're going to have to learn how to line dance, or you're not going to be able to have any fun. But thank you very much. Thank you all for bringing that. And I do want to take this time to really, um, commend the council on continuing to move forward with Safe Summer Series. It was created at a time during COVID where we're trying to get families back outdoors after we had gone through, uh, COVID-19. We've continued that and built on that. So thank each of you and every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. President, just really briefly, I do want to thank, um, Madam Pro Tem because it was, um, her idea and former President Parker's idea to bring the city and the council together. You know, we've gotten great feedback about it. It's requested. I think everybody has had, what, thousands and thousands in attendance. So thank you for that idea.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 5:00 PM at the Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church located at 2009 22nd Avenue North. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, 6:00 PM. They meet on Zoom to contact the office for the ID and pass code. South Pratt Neighborhood Association will meet tonight, 6:30 at Lovely Hope Baptist Church at 905 Corti. Um, Ansley Neighborhood will be held on Thursday, September 18th at 6:00 PM at the McHale Pine Rec Center located at 1115th Avenue F. Drew Hill Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, 6 o'clock at the Protective Stadium. That's located at 2100 Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 23rd at 1 o'clock. Please submit your agenda items, uh, email, no later than Wednesday, September 7th. Please submit your agenda items by email no later than Wednesday, September seventeenth. I'm sorry, no later than twelve noon on Wednesday, September seventeenth to the following recipients, Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham A L dot gov, and Ashanta dot C F is at Birmingham A L dot gov. If you have questions, call the office at two oh five two five four twenty-three oh two. And thank you, Madam Protem. I'm kind of like trying to give a little voice back here, but I just want to thank Council O'Quinn for the great partnership. On Sunday, it was a very awesome event to see families, people come out. We had young people. I saw little kids. It was just amazing. I mean, it was all that we thought it would be. I did have an opportunity to talk to Fair Jones last night. He was super excited to perform in Birmingham and talk to Renee Atkins, who actually manages him. And so we had some calls from Antonio Armani. Just everybody just said they just felt the love and the energy from Birmingham, and they cannot wait to come back. So it was some carrying on going on Sunday, so. So people had a ball, you know, people was like, you know, just reading the comments. And again, thank you all for coming up with such a great idea to bring families back. Where we are in this nation today, and just to see what we witnessed on Sunday. And just when you see all of this stuff pop up on Instagram, the love and the dancing, that we, we know it brings people together. So it was a beautiful event, a very safe event. And so it was, it was really good. So thank you all.
Thank you. Council Woods.
Yes, sir. Quickly, the Neighborhood, Sun Valley Neighborhood Association, that meeting will take place tonight at six thirty P M. That will be at the East Penson Valley Recreation Center. Also, looking ahead to next week, Monday, September twenty-second at seven P M. The Huffman Baptist Church, at the Huffman Baptist Church, the Huffman Neighborhood Association will meet. Always encouraging all residents to get involved and participate, and as being engaged in driving the direction of their neighborhoods. This Saturday, September twentieth, we'll host our next be litter-free cleanup at East Penson Valley Park. Be near the walking track, starting at nine A M. Volunteers are invited to come out and just continue the process of reducing litter throughout the District One footprint. Also, want to encourage everybody to stay connected with District One. District One residents can stay in touch with our office. Get the monthly email blast, just update some other events by texting D one to two zero five eight nine four five zero three zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. For District Five, I too want to say that I, I really enjoyed the concert. You know, I think it's important for us to know that, you know, we have a responsibility as a city, not only to pick up the trash and provide police protection, but to also invest in building community. And, you know, community doesn't just happen. It takes people coming together with a common purpose and creating opportunities for members of the community to, to come together and be able to engage and interact with one another in, in a positive way. So, you know, sometimes we get some flack for, you know, expenditures that, you know, are of that nature. But, you know, these are investments in our community, and I, I think they're important. So it was a great concert. I particularly enjoyed the moment when Tony O'Armani kind of broke out and did church with us. That was fabulous. And, you know, just as an example of community in Birmingham embracing who it is, I think the crowd did more singing in that moment than he did, you know. So Birmingham is so, you know, rich with culture and its faith traditions, and that really showed out in that moment. So really enjoyed that. So thank you, Counselate. Appreciate your partnership. Also want to tell you about an event that's going on today and tomorrow that's really unique. The twenty twenty-five Assistive Technology Alabama Conference is happening today and tomorrow at the B J C C. And what this conference is all about is for people who have, for one reason or another, issues, you know, communicating that may be a result of congenital disorder or a stroke or, you know, something else that, that's happened in their life. But this conference is bringing together healthcare providers, therapists, and technology companies that, you know, provide devices that help people who are, who don't communicate verbally like many of us do. They provide technology that help with those, and help people to integrate into, into society. So again, that conference is happening today and tomorrow at the B J C C. I think the council may have been invited to a happy hour that's happening later this afternoon. But you can find information on the conference at the, the website. It's listed on whova dot com, W H O V A dot com. Again, it's the A T. Alabama Conference. Otherwise, in District Five, we have several Neighborhood Association Meetings this week. Central City Neighborhood Association is meeting tonight at six P M. at the Birmingham Public Library, the Central Library. South Side Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, September eighteenth at six P M. At the Birmingham Police Department, South Precinct. And North Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, September eighteenth at six P M. at the M L K Rec. Center. The Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Meeting will take place Monday, September twenty-second at two P M. here in the council chambers. Agenda items can be submitted to Kimberly, Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham A L dot gov. In other events, One Place Family Justice Center will host its tenth annual Relentless Hope Breakfast to kick off Domestic Violence Awareness Month on Wednesday, October first at seven thirty A M. until nine A M. at the Harbert Center, featuring the annual State of Domestic Violence Report. Tickets are available at the onplacerelentishope dot swell dot gives website. So again, that's Wednesday, October first, seven thirty to nine A M. at the Harbert Center. And as always, want to remind folks about our two farmers markets that happen every Saturday. The East Lake Farmers Market and the Pepper Place Farmers Market. Please go check those out. And that concludes the announcements for District Five. Counselor Smithman.
Sorry, I just got word that Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting was actually canceled, so there will be no Neighborhood Meeting tonight.
And I just got the same word, so.
Okay, all right. Gotcha. Ms. Clark, we have some speakers that have signed up.
This morning, it's the Willie Biggs, Jose Williams, Jose Williams, Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Mohammed.
My name is William Mohammed, four eleven Lorain Street, Birmingham, Alabama, Sherman Heights Community. I have never intentionally misused this privilege. In fact, I have stayed away. I was, and that was a great loss to you, because I'm seventy-three years old, and I've been working in this community for forty-three years. The Committee to Save Jefferson County has been on the front line of every major battle in the black community in the last thirty years in this city. The co-chair came to me and asked me about doing forums. I was against it. I think that I said politicians lie, but then I relented. We planned four forums throughout June. We, we, we met two, three times a week planning these forums. We, we got Mr. Jarvis Esq. to screen the forums, and we ended up doing eleven, because people called from Brighton, Center Point, Hoover, all over the place. And we end up with over a hundred thousand views for those collective forums. Now, there are three runoffs left. It has been our custom to finish up this work by asking candidates in the runoff to come for a debate. We did this with Representative Dacha and Mr. Frank Woodson, and it was a very good event. But I just wanted to say to you that the candidate in District Four has offended me and the citizens of District Four by impruning my integrity. We're having a debate tonight that was scheduled at Bethel Baptist Collegeville at six o'clock. Candidate has declined to participate, and that's his right. But he has lied on social media by saying I'm working for the other candidate. I have been working in the black community before this candidate was ever born. And so I just wanted to come up to make that announcement that this is what's been done. People are playing politics. I leave on this note. Low voter turnout is not a sign of leadership nor apathy. It's a sign of hopelessness, and we are working against hopelessness. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public speakers, and I want to thank our officers on duty. See Officer Square back there. Thank you for being with us. Officer Pinkard is also on duty for us. Thank you so much. And that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
We are here as kicking off the Safe Summer Series with the Trail Ride. It's a partnership between myself and President Darrell O'Quinn. The crowd is bananas. We've had Fair Jones, guest pitch, and now Logan, the entertainer, is bringing it home locally.
Today, we're out at Legion Field with about a thousand or so other people. Tonight, we're having a Trail Ride edition concert, so we got performers that are doing popular line dances.
Ride, 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 ride. Horses in the stable, trail ride.
Everybody's out here with their, their fans and, you know, I came up and just as they were playing boots on the ground, and it was like hundreds of people doing the line dance all together, so.
But I love y'all, all serious, and I love y'all. I really appreciate y'all.
It is important, you know, for, if you want to build community, you have to create opportunities for people to come together. So that's what this is about. It started during the pandemic as a way for people to get outside and, you know, be safe in an outside environment, be able to social distance. And we just kind of kept it up and ran with it. And so now it's more about community-building opportunity, just giving people a good reason to come out, socialize, and have a good time.
So everybody's out here vibing, Trail Ride, boots and juice on the ground.